So we've been in executive session and we're going to reconvene now in open session. And the next item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had a question. The Ohio Schools Council Agreement, have we done business with them in the past or is this a new thing?
Well, we can have George come up for some detail, but we've worked with Ohio Schools Council for all the years I've been here.
Okay, so we do this annually or?
For this particular PCS, but we're in numerous things, the bus purchasing agreement.
Okay, all right, thank you. I was just curious. I wanted to know whether or not this was a change.
Yeah, no, and most districts do business through OSC. It's a consortium for purchasing.
Thank you.
And once again, I would just like to thank our community for being so generous with all the donations. A lot of nice ones again.
And the Shark Tank was a lot of fun on PD Day.
Excellent. So no further discussion? Then Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
That's right.
Here.
Ms.?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
And Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. The next item on our agenda is University Square. We're not acting on anything tonight, but I did want to make mention that we have been in executive session with our legal counsel and we're discussing the First Amendment to the Compensation Agreement for University Square. That's the agreement we have with the city. We are going to be receiving more information, hopefully. Hopefully, we'll have some kind of a document we can vote on, Mr. Gaynor, at our December 9th meeting, maybe?
Correct.
And I believe you said you would provide us with a table just summarizing all of the information because there's a lot of moving parts, so we can be prepared for that.
Correct.
And there was a proposal that I believe was shared with the county that you were going to share with us as well.
Correct.
Any other comments?
No.
So watch your inboxes. More information will be coming to us. And that proposal that Scott's going to share with us is pretty thick, so when you get it, start reading it right away. Don't save it till the last day. The next thing on our agenda is Top of the Hill. And on this, we voted about a year ago, maybe? Close to?
All over, yeah.
And my understanding of it is it's not a change to it, it's just changing the date to reset the clock to make sure that it's 30 years.
Correct. Because of the delays so far in the project, there's no substantive changes. This is simply resetting the clock for a new 30-year TIF. But the terms of the agreement are the same. And although there was a council committee, the whole meeting tonight, Brian Anderson is here from the city if there are any questions that you have specifically. But as I said, it's an addendum to the existing compensation agreement, simply resetting that 30-year clock for the TIF.
Well, I think what's significant is our lawyer has basically confirmed all this and looked at everything and given us guidance. And the issue is it's just extending it because it's taken the project a little bit longer to get out of the ground.
Very, yeah.
And just a reminder to everyone, Top of the Hill, we currently get about $24,000 because it's a empty parking lot. And under the deal, we're set to get quite a bit more than that once this building is built. So it's in everybody's best interest to get this moving quickly.
Yes.
So, do I have a motion to consider the addendum to the Top of the Hill TIF?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll? Oh, wait, do we have any further discussion? No. Okay, Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
All right, the next item on our agenda is actually our work session topic, so thank you for being here, team. So the session is Data Series Part Three, and I'm going to turn it over to who's presenting? Is it Felicia, are you presenting? Okay, I will turn it over to Ms. Gould.
Thank you for having us this evening. We are in Part Three of our work session on data, but this work session is on monitoring our process. So I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Ed Services team, who is here with us tonight, and introduce the persons who will also be presenting this evening.
Hello, I'm Bob Swager, Director of Curriculum.
Hello, Joyce Bukavak, Program Instru-- oh, wait, I don't even know my title. Math Instructional Specialist. Thank you.
Karen Heinz-Bergen, Instructional Specialist for ELA.
Julie Raffé, Instructional Specialist for Science.
Takara Ray, Instructional Specialist for Social Studies.
So I would like to walk you through your folder that you have, so that you know exactly what you have in your folder this evening. And these items have been placed on board docs. You have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation on the left-hand side of your folder. And on the right-hand side of your folder, you have all of the handouts that we will refer to as we go through the presentation. Handout number one, of course, is the PowerPoint. Handout number two is an actual rubric of the School Improvement Diagnostic Review. Handout number three is the actual data calendar that is used in the district. Handout four is a copy of a template for the Building Level Action Plan. Handout five is the School Improvement Building Level Action Plan Review. Handout six is a actual Building Leadership Team Classroom Learning Walk Form. And handout seven is a TBT, Teacher-Based Team Protocol. And we'll be focusing on step three in that. And last, because educators like to use so many acronyms, we have created an edu glossary for you.
Thank you.
That gives you all of those definitions of the things we will say this evening.
Because everything is a three-letter acronym. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I greatly appreciate that.
Yes. So moving right into monitoring our progress. Our goal this evening is to share with you how we monitor the progress from the district level to the building level to the actual classroom level. There are three teams that are focused in on that monitoring process. The District Leadership Team, our Building Leadership Team, and our Teacher-Based Teams. Although there are several members of the Ed Services Department, tonight will we be focused on what happens in curriculum and instruction. Ed Services is comprised of Student Services, Data and Assessment. Those are also members of our team, and they are represented here tonight in our audience, and we thank them for being here for support. When thinking about the improvement process, you think about our strategic goal. Our strategic plan was set up the same way the Ohio Improvement Process is set up. It looks at identifying critical needs. So that is anything that you do with looking at what your root causes, your challenges, and all of the basic things, your baseline data that you would do to identify critical needs. Then you move into the step of looking at what research-based practices can help you and assist with those critical needs. There is a plan that is drawn out, and we have our five goal areas up there of the strategic plan that is drawn out for looking at the implementation of those goals. We monitor and implement those goals, and then we examine and reflect. And like we would be examining and reflecting because our strategic plan is ending in 2020. These are the same things that occur at the building level as well as the teacher level. Here we have a copy of the School Improvement Diagnostic Review. The School Improvement Diagnostic Review occurred in 2012 and also in 2016. This School Improvement Diagnostic Review is designed to gather data on behaviors and practices within a school setting that provide information beyond existing data that was available through ODE. The primary purpose of the School Improvement Diagnostic Review was to help schools and districts improve student performance by analyzing current practices against effective evidence, research-based practices, as well as identifying areas of strength needing improvement, leveraging opportunities for action, and aligning evidence on research-based practices. The process looks at several areas. It looks at alignment, standards, instructional practice, environment and climate, systems of leadership, professional development, and data-driven decisions. Tonight, we will look at the standards, instructional practice, and alignment. There were four schools that were involved in the process when the School Improvement Diagnostic Review took place. The High School, Noble, Oxford, and Boulevard. There were 77 classrooms that were visited, nine administrators were interviewed, 23 teachers, 34 admini-- nine building administrators, 23 teachers, 34 administrators across the district, and 20 parents were interviewed as part of this process in 2016. If you will take a look at handout two, you will see a rubric, and I want to point out that this is not a grading system, but this is an implementation continuum. And so you will see where we have fallen with alignment and standards, instruction and assessment. And remember, this was taken in 2016.
Felicia, how would you like us to ask questions? Do you want us to just sort of burst right in, or should we just let you do the whole thing and come back?
Can we do the whole thing and then come back? Because there's a couple of videos and stuff that we'll show as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about our School Improvement Diagnostic Review. I might also reference it as the SIDR, as you can see up on the screen. But we are spending a little bit of time looking at handout number two. So the colors that you see up on the screen correlate to the ratings that are found. So we've really used this from 2016 as our roadmap for curriculum instruction and assessment. So as you can see, when you look up at the graphic on the board, you can see some things around scope of curriculum, sequencing of curriculum. Curriculum maps are aligned to CCR, which stands for College and Career Readiness Standards. You can see that we were rated in the orange around pacing guides and even those being documents that are available to the people who came and gave us our diagnostic review. And professional development, really thinking, what are we doing to help our staff with curriculum instruction and assessment? So when you look at this, this has been our roadmap for the last couple of years. And I know I've got a chance to come and speak with you around adoption of curriculum because that was one of the phases that we saw we wanted to improve upon. We needed something consistent, so that way our teachers can have some really rich conversations about how are we going to instruct. Second thing that I've come to you and talked about was the assessments that have been created based on our curriculum. And so when we get into Year Three, which we are right now, which coming from 2016 up to 2019, we're spending a lot of time talking about what does instruction look like? So we've had consistent curriculum that's been implemented in the district. We've purchased those things. We're on a cycle for reproducing those things or even evaluating those items as we have been able to implement them. We have standards that align to those curricular tools. And now we're really talking about, so what instructional strategies are going to help our students learn these things the best? I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how we've looked at curriculum instruction and assessment. But you can see from the colors and the bars and the shaded area that we had some work to do from 2016. The state gave us some very honest feedback, and we felt like we've been implementing that through our strategic plan and through the curriculum work in the district. So when you think about instruction, you see a little bit more of the same, especially when we think about what does it look like for the learning goals and the learning outcomes that students are achieving? We start thinking about teachers have access to sample standards-based lesson plans, and standards-based curriculum is reviewed by teachers annually. So when you look at the full breadth of all this work in the district, this is exactly what our Ohio Improvement Process aims to address. We know that getting teachers to talk with each other around high-quality curricular materials, looking at instructional strategies, and then aligning that to not only having success on OST, but also success on in-district assessments. That's really what our critical area of focus has been. When you look at these assessments, you can see quarterly assessments are aligned, and some of that relates back to the fact that we didn't have quarterly assessments back in 2016. Or maybe they were sporadic, so we may have had them at the high school level, but we didn't have them at the middle school level. Maybe we didn't have those things at the elementary level. So we've really been looking at how does curriculum instruction and assessment really go together to inform the results that our students are able to produce on state assessments and other assessments? When we continue, this is how we've internalized that information in district. So the first graph is really the external piece that's giving us feedback. And this is the message on this slide that we've really started to get in front of staff. So when we got a chance to meet with our elementary teachers during grade-level team meetings, we've met every middle school teacher at the same, and then we've worked with our department liaisons, this is how we're talking about curriculum instruction and assessment. The curriculum is really the standards for what students should be learning. They are the roadmap of how to get there and a general timeframe from which to work. We think that the curriculum is informed by state and national standards, but it goes beyond that, especially when we see what is important for all students in CHUH to learn. An example of that could be how we've adopted tools to help our students become 21st-century learners, be ready to collaborate through the use of our Google tools. We've even had some things that come before the board, talk about our Easy Tech Curriculum, which is how students are learning how to type and word process and use Excel spreadsheets or Google Sheets. All of that is not going to come through in a state document, but it is something that we really value here in CHUH. So we put that into our curriculum maps and help our teachers be able to access that with students. If you go to your presentation, you actually can click on the curriculum maps, and you can see what that looks like for each grade level. So we want to be transparent. We hope that when the state comes back through for another Improvement Diagnostic Review, that a lot of this material is much more readily accessible for people to review and to use, just like we want our teachers to be able to use it. When we think about the instructional piece, that really boils down to strategies used to help students learn and maintain information, content, and skills, but in a way that allows them to move that content to their long-term memory. And I think that this is a really big piece when we talk about instruction. We might be thinking, instruction for the purpose of giving information is one way to look at it. But when we're trying to get our students to be successful on district and state assessments, it's not about holding on to information for short-term gains. It's really how do we help students hold on to information, put it into their long-term memory, and really create a memory around it? Even brain research talks to us about how do we continue to develop these synapses in our brains so we can continue to go back to those connections? So we're not teaching so students can remember it for a test and then do a brain dump. We're really looking at what are the instructional strategies that help students hold on to information longer? Specifically, we're looking at relevant experiences, hands-on learning, connection to college and career. And of course, you've even seen some examples of the project-based learning, as many of our students have come before you the last couple of years to talk about green infrastructure and how they're calculating surface area. What does it look like to even make some modifications to a worksite because of a runoff? So those are some ways that we're really engaging our students with some of the standards. That goes back to the instruction. This year, we've been trying to narrow our focus even more specifically. And the instructional strategies that we are talking about this year and we're monitoring for, we'll refer to as before, during, and after reading strategies. So as I talked about, how do you move something from short-term memory to long-term memory? We think that if you interact with it before in order to create some prior knowledge or background knowledge, you do something during reading. So you might be taking notes, you might be highlighting, you might be marking the text, and then you do something after, like make a presentation, or create a summary, or maybe even do something with technology to show how you've learned it. We really think that those three steps are critical to moving things to long-term memory. And you'll see that as well in our instruction slide. How that happens is also very uncritical. So when we think about not just all whole group learning, but what does it look like for students to be working in pairs and partner groups and even have some individual thinker work time? That's where the whole small and individual groupings come into play. The last component around curriculum instruction and assessment is that notion of assessment. So how students demonstrate knowledge and skills? And we know that there's multiple ways for students to be able to show what they know. It's not just a state test. It's not just a district benchmark assessment. Some of it even comes through based on the conversations and observations that teachers have. So what does it look like for staff to be able to calculate from a conversation that they have with students and talk about that being part of the learning as well? What we have here on this slide, we want our teachers to do something very specific when it comes to, we want random and planned solicitation of student responses. So we don't want just the students who raise their hand to be called on so we can make instructional decisions based on a very small sample size. We want to do some random solicitation of those student responses in order to really think about what does the entire class know? What's their thinking at this moment? So our assessment piece is really using something called formative assessment. That is assessments that drive your instruction minute by minute, not necessarily waiting for an end of a unit test, or even the end of the lesson, or the end of a week. We want to know what is happening right now and how do we make some modifications to
So as we think about the data that we need to collect in order to go back to our School Improvement Diagnostic Review, we have created a CHUH data calendar. And in the data calendar, we look at data monthly. So if you look at the green boxes, the green boxes are some external measures and internal measures that Allison has shared with you in the past. We look at the report card analysis when it comes in. We usually do that annually in June with our Building Leadership Team members. They then finalize their building level action plans and monitor the goals. So those are things that the Ed Services team would be doing with them. The blue occurs every month. And the reason it occurs every month, because it is looking at climate. It looks at student attendance, it looks at discipline data, all of those things around climate, any surveys that they may be doing as well. The orange looks at internal measures, where we're looking at grades, credits earned, any of those things in elementary or secondary schools. Purple looks at internal measures. This is when we're looking at our common assessments, we're looking at our NWA map tests. And then the red is where the teacher-based teams take a survey and kind of calibrate where they are as a functioning teacher-based team. So each month, the District Leadership Team meets, and we have specific data points that we are looking at. And that's from a district level. And that was handout number three for you. So now, taking into account what we talked about with the School Improvement Diagnostic Review, we want to actually take one of our goal areas from our strategic plan and make it come alive and talk about how that process monitoring looks. Taking that district goal from a district level, moving it to a building level, and then down to a teacher-based team level, so that we can really show you how that monitoring process piece takes place. So here is an actual goal from our strategic plan that you see here. The district focus is at the top, and it is written in what we call a SMART goal. Specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely. Then we have an objective about what we want to see take place, and then there's an actual strategy that occurs. And here we have, every teacher will use evidence-based strategies and materials to ensure that all students can assess grade-level expectations through the use of critical thinking and problem solving. Right to what Bob has shared with you about curriculum, instruction, and assessment. If you will move into handout four in your packet. Again, looking at the district level, that is the strategic plan goal. Now we want to take that strategic plan strategy and make it a strategy for our buildings. This is an actual building goal, where we talk about teachers are going to use instructional strategies aligned with literacy best practices to plan instruction and monitor student achievement. That is taking that district goal and making it actualize into a building goal. From there, that building strategy is taken to the actual teacher level. And that's where we will look at step three later on the teacher-based protocol. Teachers choose an evidence-based strategy such as reciprocal teaching, or transacting, or extracting the text before, during, and after, of which we've discussed, and we call it the BDA strategy. If you look at the Building Level Action Plan, which is your handout four, the first part of the action plan goes back to that continuous improvement cycle where we talked about picking out your critical needs, understanding exactly what your root causes are. How did we get here? And what is the actual cause of us being there? So there is a deep embedded professional development that occurs with the building level leadership team in order for them to do this root cause analysis. If you flip, you will then see that the buildings are creating their goals, they create action steps around their goals, they talk about what evidence of data they will need, who's responsible for it, and how they will monitor that each month. Not only are they creating action steps for instruction and assessment, but also climate. And these also have to be supported through a family and community engagement component as well as an equity component. In addition to that, any monies that are allocated for the building must support the goal. So they have to talk about how the monies that are at their building, whether it be federal and sometimes general fund, how it supports their actual goals for their building. And the next page just shows you also in their building level action plan, as we refer to the data calendar, each month, there is a place for them to house their data, where we can look at it readily available on a Google document. So you'll see climate, as well as an opportunity for them to actually put in their common assessment and OST analysis. And this is monitored monthly.
Good evening. This slide really synthesizes and condenses all of the presentations so far, giving a plan for improved instruction. So we're talking about this throughout the district in all content areas, all grade levels, K through 12. So our first item here is our focus on what happens before, during, and after reading. And again, you may hear in a couple of videos that we'll be seeing in a moment that the teachers refer to that as BDA. But it's giving the students the opportunity to really interact with the text. We know if you just place a text in front of a student, that's not going to stick with them the same way that it would if you give them the opportunity to activate their prior knowledge with a before strategy, give them a way to engage with the text while they're reading, and then give them a way to apply what they've read after they've read. And so that will move that into that long-term memory that Bob was talking about before. The second of our big three areas of focus for improved instruction this year is the use of formative assessment techniques. So again, that's going to be taking and monitoring student performance and their understanding throughout the lesson, so that the teacher is able to make instructional decisions right then during the lesson based on students' needs and understanding. And those formative assessments can also lead to our third point here, selecting the best grouping for the students based on the learning target, the content, and where the students are in their understanding. So when we say grouping, that may look like whole group instruction, small group instruction with a teacher, pairs of students working together, or having opportunities for individual And here, we're going to hear from Tamara Bishko. She's our instructional coach at Garrity Elementary, and she's going to talk a little bit about the before, during, and after reading strategy that their whole staff has dis- bit about the before, during, and after reading strategy that their whole staff has decided to focus on this year. It's called reciprocal teaching, and it's referred to as the Fab Four. So as students are interacting with the texts, they are predicting, so they're using clues from the text or the illustrations to predict what's going to happen in the text or what will happen next. They are questioning, so they are asking questions as they read. They are clarifying, trying to figure out either hard words or ideas that they may not understand. And then they are summarizing, using their own words, they tell the main ideas from the text in order. And so we can scaffold this with a lot of teacher support at the beginning and in the younger grades, and eventually the students are able to do these four things on their own. They take a role within the group, and they can work through this process as a small group of students. So here's Tammy's explanation.
Hi, my name is Tamara Bishko. I'm the instructional coach here at Garrity Professional Development School. When we were thinking about our instructional conversations here at Garrity, we really started to, we really had to look at our instructional practices. And so one way we are aligned with our district focus of having before, during, and after instructional strategies is through the adoption of reciprocal teaching as our school-wide strategy. And so what helps us through our TBT process when we are discussing student work and instructional practices is utilizing or having a common language around reciprocal teaching and what that looks like, K through two or three through five, for example. So really having that focused instructional strategy has really helped for us to not only have a common language, but really ensure that our students are getting a really nice diet of instruction, one that will articulate itself year after year after year.
Thank you, Tammy. Also with our building level action plan, there is an opportunity for us to provide feedback during that monitoring process, which is handout number five for you, that we provide comments to the building leadership team in the month of September, and then we take a pulse again in the month of January, giving them the opportunity to share where they are in their action steps, to see if they are progressing with the goals that they have set. And if not, it's an opportunity to refine and revise any goals during that time. The other way that we check for the three things that we've shared around before, during, and after strategies, randomization, and formative assessment, is what we call learning walks. Many times, people use the term walkthrough and learning walk interchangeably. But the difference between the learning walks that take place is that they are purposeful and targeted. They're targeted around instruction and assessment. They are very transparent. We do these learning walks with the building leadership team, so they are going into classrooms along with the Ed Services team. And the learning walk is really focused on the teaching practice and student learning that is taking place in the classroom, as well as we are looking for certain items. If you would look at handout number six. As we are going into the classroom, we are actually filling out in document. Most of the times, we are doing it electronically, we can do it on our phone, iPad, Chromebook, computer, whatever they have that is available. And we're looking at each school. But if you take a look at the items that we are looking for when we're going into the classroom, we're looking at the student engagement that happens with students and teachers. We're looking at assessment and feedback, so that's those formative assessments that we talked about. We are looking at lesson delivery, how is that lesson being delivered, whole group, small group, pairs. We are also looking to see if district adopted materials are being used to teach that. We are very wealthy in the area of technology, so we want to see our teachers using technology in order to help students understand the instruction and the curriculums that we have. And we look to see how the teachers are using that technology through what we call a SAMR model. And you have a picture of that on five of six. What SAMR means substitution, augmentation, modification, and redefinition, and those are defined there. And then at the end, we are also looking at climate. We are looking at if our schools are using their PBIS strategies, CHAMPs, conscious discipline, all of those things that they have put in to monitor the climate in their building, so that they can have an environment that is conducive to learning. And we have been doing learning walks for three years since the school improvement diagnostic So I shared with you the building walkthrough form. But here you'll see the actual Ed Services team. As we finish doing a learning walk, we are sitting with the BLT members, and we are actually reviewing all of the information that I just shared with you. We provide all of that information to the building leadership team. They take that information and feedback and use it as a monitoring piece for the goals that they have set, as well as what steps they need to do next with their staff. I can tell you that many of the building leadership teams not only are doing learning walks with us, but they are also doing teacher-based learning walks on their own, where they are also going in to actually monitor their process as well. So here, we want you to see an actual learning walk debrief, and you'll see two teachers here talking about lesson delivery. And this is feedback that we provided for them during the learning walk. So here we have two teachers from Rocks. And so here you would see the actual diagram that we would share with the team. This is taking all of the information that has taken place. I know you see 133 responses up there, but what happens is what you are actually putting in what you're seeing. So if you go into a classroom, it may start out as whole group, then it moves into small group, and you're able to select more than one thing. In this particular instance, what we saw at this school was that 63.2% of the time, we saw whole group instruction. And so we were able to share that with the team. So if they were looking at moving more towards small group for that snapshot that we saw at that time, we were able to provide them with that feedback.
So I'm going to draw your attention to our teacher-based team form, which is actually handout number seven. It's a pretty large set of documents, but this is really what drives our teacher-based teams. So this is not something that teachers use every single time. It might take them a couple of weeks to go through monitoring, but this is really that idea of planning for instruction all the way through choosing instructional strategies, and then finishing up with a post-assessment. As you know, there have been certain student groups that we've been focused on here in Cleveland Heights University Heights, that we really want to make sure that those students are accessing the content and curriculum. So you can even see that they might be designated out based on student groups. So even within this form, we talk a little bit about that. There are two principals speaking just really quickly about how they view the data collection piece for the teacher-based teams. So as you can hear, Mr. McNichols talking about what does it look like for us to have good data, and then how do we make good instructional decisions about it? That really comes through with our teacher-based team or TBT protocol form, looking at what kids know already, and then being able to fill in the gaps. Listen to what Rachel has to say. And specifically, when we look at this, Rachel, from the video, helps us get into step number three of this five-step process. And this is where teachers really get a chance to think about, instructionally, what are we doing to help close some of the gaps in our achievement data? So when we talk about the rubber hitting the road, and I know that Allison made the data presentation to say, well, this is our current reality, how are we trying to impact that? That really comes through with step three in our TBT form. What instructional strategies are teachers using in a day-to-day situation to help our students better achieve the content, the skills, or even some of the cognitive mastery that they're being expected to have to keep pace with other students within the state of Ohio? And you can see that some of those relate right back into that before, during, and after reading strategies.
So next, we have for you an example of a teacher at the high school who has chosen a particular consistent language and actions to guide students through their reading. Listen to this teacher as she describes her framework that they're using this year for her before, during, and after reading.
My name is Hannah Reed. I teach ninth grade in English up here up at the high school. We are using BDA strategies with all of our collections texts that we use in the textbook. We begin with our before-reading activities, which include surface reading, where we look at the text features and the text forms. From there, we have three voices that we use to deconstruct the text and interact with the text. The first voice is the decoder voice, which helps us understand, do we understand the words? Can we summarize what we're reading? The second voice is the inquisitor voice, and the inquisitor voice teaches students to stop and ask questions when they don't understand what they're reading in the text. And then we categorize those questions as to how we can get answers to them. And then finally, the students dig into the text really deeply with the analyzer voice. And the analyzer voice is really where they get into metaphorical thinking and reflective thinking. After we finish with the text, we usually use some type of Socratic seminar or philosophical chair to do our after-reading strategies.
So now let's hear from Antonio, a ninth grader in Dr. Reed's class, as he describes his interpretation of the framework and how it's impacted him and his understanding of text.
All right, my name is Antonio Gibson. I'm a ninth grader at Cleveland Heights High School, and I'm talking about the decoder-analyzer voice method that my teacher uses. The decoder voice helps us to analyze words that we may not know in reading lines, so it gives us a better understanding, like with our own prior knowledge. And the analyzer voice helps you relate to things in the real world and other texts, such as other books or just other data yourself.
So you had heard just how one teacher and how one student have taken one of our big threes and put it into practice. Here on this slide is a report from our assessment system, Illuminate Ed. It's one way that teachers can analyze student responses from our common assessments. So notice that the overall score in the first column shows that all but one student achieved mastery. Upon further analysis, teachers can see that multiple students responded with choice B for question four, which is the fifth column of the chart. When teachers reviewed that question, they noticed that response B was a concrete response to what is the theme of this passage? The correct answer, D, was an implied theme. So the teacher now can take that information about these students who had been thinking at a concrete level, form a small group with them, do some reteaching, and help support them in their thinking about that particular text.
Next, you're going to see Alexia Boils discuss her usage of our district elements for improved instruction. So I'm going to give you a visualization of what I saw in her classroom. Ms. Boils used before, during, and after reading strategies while reading the strawberry from food to fabric softener. She activated prior knowledge by asking students what they knew or what they thought of when they heard strawberries, and they discussed what it tasted like, what their families did with strawberries, some of them went strawberry picking. During reading, Ms. Boils asked comprehension questions, giving students time to search for the evidence, then turn and talk with a neighbor to discuss their answer. She utilized popsicle sticks to randomly assess students, creating an engaging environment. Ms. Boils also used wait time, effectively allowing students to discuss each question for over a minute. After reading, students worked in small groups to find evidence, answering additional questions. Ms. Boils exhibits all of the elements the district has outlined as planned, as a plan for improved instruction, BDA, formative assessment through randomization, and student groupings. So she'll discuss her method.
Hello, my name is Alexia Boils, and I am teaching fourth grade at Noble Elementary School this year. I would like to speak to you about how I've been implementing the district focus area. So one way I've been doing randomization is every day in my read-aloud, my whole group read-aloud, as a formative assessment, I will randomly select a student after we've done our turn-and-talk discussions and just allow them to share out their comprehension of the text, especially using different text-based strategies we've worked on in class during our reading. Also, I have been using before, during, and after reading strategies, which is something that I've been doing naturally in my teaching. But as the district focus this year, I've been able to bring examples to my team, and we can talk through different ways that we start our reading, what we do for vocabulary, what we do for comprehension. And that's another way to fold in those formative assessments for our students, to make sure we know exactly where they are, and we don't wait until a summative assessment at the very end of a unit to really gauge how our students are progressing and how we're doing with our teaching. Because I do think that gauging the students' learning and helping them along the way is crucial. Also, our building level action plan has really impacted our instructional conversations at the TBT level. I'm able to talk to my teammates about these different district-wide strategies, and it allows for alignment, which is really helpful, because I think some of the best professional development can be captured right from the teacher next door. So we are all working together, and it's really helping us even think vertically. I can go to the third grade team or the fifth grade team, I can see what they are doing, and it's helping us just rally around a few instructional targeted strategies at the building level to focus on best practice.
And as we discuss making progress and moving forward, the Ed Service team strives to strengthen our understanding of grade level expectations by providing regular professional learning opportunities on the big three district goals. In quarterly grade-level team meetings for elementary and middle school teachers, which includes intervention specialists, we model the goals and facilitate conversation among colleagues. New this year, we have added opportunities for the high school department liaisons. We also provide similar professional support during monthly principal meetings and bi-weekly instructional coaches meeting. On our next target, the curriculum instruction team regularly reviews and analyzes our district assessments and verifies that assessments are up to date. Based on teacher feedback, math assessments have been streamlined for grades three through six this year. Our first round of district assessments typically contained 20 to 25 questions based on publisher-created The process to revise our district assessments include identifying main concepts, rereading The process to revise our district assessments include identifying main concepts, rereading the standards, collecting released OST questions, and purposely choosing questions that provide students with additional practice on items they may see on state assessments, with an intentional focus on priority standards for expected learning at the grade level, and include tech-enhanced questions.
So moving into monitoring our progress, we've talked about what we've done at the district level and how we've taken a goal from the strategic plan. We've moved that goal down to the building as well as to the teacher level. We've looked at process monitoring through our strategic plan goal with our district data calendar and our district leadership team. We've looked at the building leadership team and them monitoring through the data calendar, their building-level action plan, and how they provide feedback to their teacher-based team, as well as working with the ed services team through learning walks to provide them feedback. And then the teacher-based teams, where curriculum and instruction has talked about the grade-level meetings that they are having with them, the bi-weekly meetings with instructional support, as well as our weekly meetings on looking at the data around the schools and providing them feedback for what they need in order to achieve the goals. This concludes our monitoring process for our presentation this evening, and we will now take questions.
Can you guys go back to slide 18? Really having a hard time understanding this. We were at the right one a minute ago.
Where was that?
Yeah. It's the green table.
You want the green one? Okay.
Which I think, I think when you meant columns, I mean, I think those are students. A student is a column.
The green student is a row.
Students are row, okay.
Students are row.
Students are row. First score is the overall score on the entire assessment.
I'm sorry. I was trying to, trying to use my thing as a cursor.
Second column is question one, third column, question two, fourth column, question three, fourth, fifth column, question four.
So the ones mean?
Basically, they had a, it was a rubric score of a zero or a one, and they earned one point.
So they all got whatever it was.
So each of the students there received the one point out of the one possible. And then it displays in the red to show that that was an incorrect response, and it delineates what the response was that was selected. So in the description, those students chose the letter B choice, where the letter D was actually correct. So now you can take those three students out and provide some guided small group instruction for them based on their misconception or the response that they had selected.
Or as a teacher, you could also look at what that standard was and see exactly, go back and do some reflection on how you taught that standard, and then do, think about how you would design your lesson for later.
So I know one of our challenges is pacing across the classroom, across multiple teachers. So how, and that sort of goes back to this, one of the items in the state measure, I'm more of the, like, think slide number two, possibly. So every teacher in, let's say, Algebra II, I mean, maybe math's not the right example, but let's.
No, that's fine. We're good.
Okay, so you got Algebra II, you know, everybody's supposed to be at a particular pace. Let's say by the time we're out for the Thanksgiving holiday, do you measure, then, how far along each classroom is and how those students are doing? I mean, it would seem to me that if this data is available at the teacher level, it's available at the principal level, it's available at all the levels. So it's really, at that point, I mean, where's the remediation coming in? If, I mean, because this is just, I mean, this is, you know, basic stuff that I would think a teacher would see. I mean, when you hand out a test, you're going to get that kind of data, but is it rolling up? And are we, as administrators, you know, looking at this to see, oh, well, in school number B, Algebra Class 302, they're way behind for whatever reason? And also, I know we're going to have an equity conversation later between our middle schools, or I say, an equality conversation about our middle schools. I mean, are we looking at, you know, the, I guess, the performance of where we are pacing wide across those two schools? Because those kids are going to get bubbled up to go to, you know, the next math level at the high school. Now, are they going to be ready and are they going to be prepared to take that next math class at the high school? So I'm looking at this from a much bigger picture perspective.
And we look at that picture monthly. Because as we go back to that data calendar, remember, it talked about the purple areas? On that data calendar. So we're looking at it from, each time a building has a learning walk, and we do a learning walk in the fall and in the winter. During that time, when they are presenting their information, they talk about where they are in the pacing guide. So that's one way we can see it. We also see it as that we have access to all of the data across the district. So we're looking at that weekly or monthly in our ed services team meetings about where buildings are, where support is needed. And that's really why we've kind of tiered our support in the ed services department about how we provide support to those particular buildings. If we see that something is happening in one of the content areas, then that's where our content area specialist comes in to provide that support. And how can we look at helping those teachers, along with the principal, to help guide teachers on where they can go in the curriculum to actually provide that extra time? Because there are certain timeframes in the pacing guide, but there are also built-in time for them to also make up any time that they may go longer on a particular unit. So it's not just a straight, I need to, yes, that I need to do this, but there's also built-in time to that pacing guide as well.
So I would love to see where we're at, at a snapshot of time. And this put you on the spot, so, not now, but at some point in the near future, I'd love to see some kind of snapshot of where we are with a given class.
Pacing and unit assessment.
Yeah, just, 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 I mean, because I'm sort of curious to see how, you know, how we're using this data and where it goes. Well, no, no, I'm done. I mean.
In addition to the work that ed services team is leading around this process, my visits with the principals are focused on unit assessment performance. So they get several different times where there's follow-up on, where are we with the Unit One, Unit Two assessments? What kind of trends are we seeing? What adjustments need to be made? And then my role also was to feed back to central office, what are the supports that principals are saying that they need in their building to address some of those? So in the first round of visits for the fall, you know, I was able to see, in the middle schools, for example, a difference in performance on the science assessments. And in reflection and talking with the principals, the teachers came to a realization that they were taking too long on some things, and they, and because they weren't following the pacing guide as a result, you saw unit assessment results that don't necessarily reflect that the kids can't get it, it just hadn't been taught.
They haven't had time.
And so, and so again, that's something they'd heard from the ed services team, but then it also showed up in the data. The principal also circles back with that, circling back with that team and say, okay, we need to make some adjustments here. Yeah.
Yeah, so where this is sort of heading is, you know, we're fresh from OSBA.
I know where you're going.
Vendors galore are trying to pitch their services to us, so you have to be a little wary. But, I mean, some of us at this table are data nerds. I mean, we, you know, it's our profession, it's what we do, we look at testing data. I mean, professionally, I look at testing data and deliver that to corporations. I look at, so, you know, some of these things personally were interested to me, and I know you were interested in one, but there's this one vendor that allegedly has one-third of the market share in Ohio, and he was bringing up dashboard after dashboard after dashboard of just the data of the pacing guides of where this one particular school was in all their classes. It was just there for everybody to see. It was an expectation. And, you know, clearly, in my opinion, would change the culture of the, of that district, because everybody knows where everybody is and everybody's paced at. And I know pacing is just one of many, many things. It's obviously something that the, well, we feel is important and something the ODE feels is important. But, I mean, it just, clearly, I mean, you just push a button and then you get the, I mean, you just see the data.
So, if you don't mind.
Oh, please.
There's a lot going through my, my head, looking at this from the lens of a, you know, an everyday classroom teacher. And I'm a huge proponent of pacing guides. I think that especially, you know, as a teacher, the first few years into teaching this, this course, the pacing guides are incredibly important, just as putting up signposts, here's where you kind of sort of, ish, I'm going to be by this date. You know, but we're talking about a number of different things here, and a lot of this, it seems to me, comes down to serving different masters. So we, we have data like the Luminate Ed report that we saw a few minutes ago. And you have a number of students, and students got different questions. Well, most students got most questions right. And yet, we also need, so we need to decide what and how to now do about that. How do we respond to the students who are behind? Figuring out, was that because they weren't here? Attendance issues? They have comprehension issues? They have reading comprehension issues? We have students in any one of our classrooms who enter the room at widely disparate reading levels. Same thing goes for mathematics. So this is, part of this is, what curriculum materials do we have? So how do we reach out to the students who need that extra help? And at the same time, at literally the same time in a class of 24? How are we addressing the need for the students who did get it? Because the bell period is the same. And we are inclined to be working in a small group and having activities going on to help those kids who missed those questions bring them up, but those kids who are there have a need and a right to keep moving forward simultaneous. So as we talk about a pacing guide, if there's 24 kids in the room, there's kind of 24 pacing guides. And that becomes, you begin to get into what is a reasonable expectation of the teacher, and it's an incredibly difficult thing to manage. So I just sort of wanted to bring that, that discussion in, too. As we talk about pacing guides, yes. As we talk about data, 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 yes. Also recognizing the big pieces that our kid, you know, kids come in the room at different places. Kids will leave the room at different places. And so I think that we have to be careful with what we're looking for, and we're also doing some instruction in between all this measuring. It's a difficult thing to balance.
But isn't the measuring just taking place? I mean, there's, I mean, if your child in the classroom, you get taught something, you take a quiz or something? So it's just a natural test? It's not additional? Or is this all additional assessments?
So I think that one of the things that we've been really working with teacher teams to do is, I think maybe when, the first year, it was, well, we have this district's test, and then I have my tests. And we've been spending a lot of time trying to say, so how do we just have a test? Instead of your test and my test or the district test and?
Or the company's test.
Or the company's test. I mean, even what Ms. Bukovac talked about is the, you know, the vendor gave us, and just an item bank test, just thinking about math, here's 24 questions for Unit One, great. And we gave that to say, like, what do we know about this assessment? If we never gave it, we wouldn't know anything about this assessment. But year two, it's like, well, we learned some things about this assessment. We learned that we don't like three questions, because it doesn't really match what the vendor is saying this unit's about. So we learned that. And now it's like, how do we take a 22-question assessment and we turn it into a six-question, really targeted, really focused, OST practice, you know, all of these things that we know about high-quality assessments, we've been able to modify that assessment. So it's not either or, it's the best of both worlds. And so as we continue to have some time in the conversation, it's not really just about changing the assessment, it's about, through looking at that with teachers, everybody's getting clearer. Everybody's getting clearer on the standard, the expectation for learning, what to do in your groups. I think Mr. Heinz talked about that idea. We're not quite at 24 different pacing guides. I mean, I think our data tells us that we might have four different pacings going on. That's still a lot to handle. But it's why the district is focusing specifically on, well, what do you look, what do you do in these small groups? What does that look like? What does it feel like? How do we coach students up? And I think we all know that early intervention on some of these concepts fixes a real quick cure. If you can just start and pull a small group, and a two-minute explanation is going to get a lot of kids right back on track. But if we are always doing whole-group instruction, we miss that opportunity. So that's why it's one of our big focus areas, is what does it look like for a teacher to pull a group? Or, you know, what does it look like to have teachers give some responsibility over to students to say, like, well, you're going to work independently, or you're going to work with this small group, or maybe even read a text that maybe not everybody has to read, because that's most appropriate for what you should be doing right now in this class. But that all plays into the equation. But I do think that our tests are getting much our assessments, and people will talk about tests and assessments, but our assessments are giving teachers data to make instructional decisions. And that's what we want to do.
And our teachers are actually taking those assessments so that they can also plan ahead, because they know exactly what kids are expected to do. So they're planning their lessons around that, and so then when those misconceptions come up, they have an idea ahead of time, this is something that I know I really need to focus in on.
Another really important piece is, and then I'll back away to the others, but the work that we're doing with furniture means the world of difference in a classroom when you're talking about grouping students. And, and, you know, to have things like what we are sitting at, where you can re, literally shuffle the room in the snap of a finger and really break kids off into groups that has furniture that supports that work, and it sounds crazy, that's actually on wheels, so that you are not creating the worst noise in the history of noises for everybody above and below and on all sides. So, so really, the money that we're spending on, on classroom furniture is a critical piece to the work that we're talking about, the actual instruction that we're talking about as well.
I have a question on this slide. One of the things that you said that we were measuring is student attendance. Do we measure staff attendance, too, on this? Because that does play a big role in climate. And the number-one complaint I have gotten this year from parents, number one, is number of subs and how that impacts students' learning or not learning. I have been getting a lot of calls on that. So to me, yes, student attendance is important, but I think staff attendance also plays a key role in how much our students are learning.
They actually have to collect staff attendance as well on their monthly report.
Does that include staff when they're out for professional developments and meetings and all that sorts? Because a lot of our absences are.
Yeah, there's a tab on there when it says, when it talks about attendance, they have to collect it for both the staff and the students.
Okay.
So we're looking at, we look at that monthly, too, to see how many people are out for professional development and how people are really just out for not being at work.
Well, you know.
And then we also have our HR director that also provides us that information as well.
And are we able to track that with, I mean, I understand when teachers are out or staff is out for professional development, but when they're just out for long-term absences and things?
Yes.
And, you know, I can speak from experience. We don't have a good history of getting good subs in for long-term quickly. You know, you will have two or three weeks, sometimes four weeks. You know, you will have two or three weeks, sometimes four weeks, before you actually have a good long-term sub in that classroom. And it does impact our students' learning.
We're having a challenge with subs in general. It's a shared challenge just across districts, especially in content areas, you know, like science, for example, students with I D's. And so, we have been working with, we're actually working in partnership with union leadership on this, really trying to figure out how we can find more options in terms of subs and things we can do to address some of the trends. The team also has made some adjustments in professional development, being sensitive to how difficult it has been to get subs. When the economy is stronger, there are less people teaching, you know, who substitute teaching. So, I don't know what's gonna happen.
You go to slide.
Last couple of years. But for now, it has been a challenge. But we are problem-solving that. So, it's definitely on our radar. We've been working to address it.
I really like hearing that you're working with the union leadership. And also, I, I would hope that you're also asking teachers their advice or their input onto that as well. Because I know sometimes teachers will say, you know, at least teachers who talk to me will say, well, we could've done this by doing this, this, or this, but nobody ever asked us, like, how we could've solved this issue.
When I saw this picture, I saw a room full of teachers who weren't in their classrooms. That's, you know, that's, so, so you're absolutely right. So, everything, all, all this stuff has these ripple effects, you know? All the good work. It's, it's a challenge.
I had another question. And this was slides five and six, when you were showing the color charts from way at the beginning. And I believe the schools you said that were involved in the, the review was the high school, Noble, Oxford, and Boulevard?
Yes.
So, no middle school?
No, not at that time.
Okay, was there a reason for that?
They randomly picked the schools from O D E.
Okay, so, O D, that was an O D decision, not ours.
And does that mean that O D E will come back in 2020? Is it a four-year cycle? Do we know anything about how that works?
Currently, the data we have shows that it's a four-year cycle, but we're not sure.
And then, another question I had was when we talked about the B L T walkthroughs?
Yes.
I know you like the board members to do board walkthroughs. So, just a plea to please let us know when you want us to do that. Give us plenty of time. I think last year was like, oh, do it next week. And we, you know, we need a little more time than that to plan it. It's something I really enjoy doing, so I hope that we will be asked and invited to do that again. And this is more a comment to my team. I would ask, please go to a school you don't normally go to. I know in the past, you know, I've tended to go to Garrity or Boulevard or Monticello because those are the schools that I'm familiar with and I know the teachers. And it's always fun to go see, you know, former teachers that are beloved. But I think it really is good for us also to go to schools that we don't typically go to and get to know some of the other schools that, you know, I, my child didn't attend Canterbury. I should probably go to Canterbury. And then, I would also like us to do a walkthrough, not just of our regular classrooms, but a C T E program.
I, I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. I was in your walkthroughs. I see that you had, you kind of enhanced that this year. And, yeah, I, I think that you, you did a good job. And I also liked the color-coded, the D L T calendars. Yeah. How that, because that gives us a better understanding and see how you all are, how you all are tracking that, tracking different information. And yes, Jody, I'll make sure I go to a school that I haven't been to.
Well, we'll work with Ms. Kirby to get that all set up for you. Because even if you go to Options, we have a different learning walk form because they are all technology platform. So, we look at things differently at those particular buildings. And we also have information that we look at when we look at a preschool classroom 'cause it's totally different as well.
Oh, yeah.
Now, have Options always been part of the walkthroughs?
Yes, yes, in the three years yet. 'Cause they have data we have to collect as well.
Yeah.
I don't think we've gone through, I've never done a walkthrough at Options.
See, we can add them to the list.
Yeah.
So, each of the four of you is responsible for helping with content for K through 12, plus all the various permutations there might be in between for your subjects?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just thinking of how, how much that encompasses. What happens with, say, foreign languages, or art, or music, or other subjects? Do we look at those at all? And how do we do that?
So, all of those usually fall under my purview. I try to organize those groups.
You get, and everything else, yes.
Five percent other.
Exactly. And mainly, it's, you know, we really try to look at, how do we get the specialists in the room? How do we get them talking? How do we get the district to be able to listen to some of the concerns that they have? Even last year, we did, actually, it may have been two years ago now, we did a curricular adoption for K-12 Spanish. And it was a lot of the same kind of thing. How do we continue to think about professional development? What does it look like? I am not a native Spanish speaker. But...
Me neither.
But it was just trying to put teachers together, give them the form, continue to give them the resources. And they are the content experts. All these people that are sitting here to my right are definite content experts. But even more than that, they're strategy experts. They know how to teach anything to anyone. So, from the district lens, yes, we, it's great to have someone who knows K-12 math and can look at those standards and really see the, the nuances. But really, our instructional staff help people, no matter what content, no matter what level, think about how do we get kids to learn. So, we think of them as strategy experts.
And also, Malia, don't forget, we have other support as well. So, when we're thinking about intervention and enrichment, we also have our student services team, which is also part of Ed Services as well, that is also helping us with those curriculum pieces.
A tiny sidebar about substitutes. Did we ever find the long-term sub for sign language at the high school?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good. Hooray. Because, you know, think about a, a niche market. How do you find someone?
I think she started today.
Okay, wonderful. That's good news, thank you.
So, when Dan says, he pointed to a picture of a bunch of teachers in the video.
Yep.
I look at the four of you. And when Dr. Dixon, I think, was working towards, you know, creating a spot for you guys, and they pulled you out of the classroom, I was devastated. Because, you know, you, you've had some of my kids and it made a huge difference on them. And it kills me when I see you guys not in the classroom. But you gotta look at the big picture. And if you can take your expertise and apply that, I mean, that's just gold. That's great. Can we go, okay, you are on slide five. So, when, when you really look at this, and I know it's four years old, it's, it doesn't paint the district in the best light.
Hence the reaction. So, remember I said, don't use it as a grade, use it as a continuum?
Well, you know, that's why, you know, I'm real anxious to try to... And, you know, I think the stuff that we see from O D, O D is somewhat suspect. It's a lot suspect, okay? But there's some good things. There's some great practices. And there's some good assessments. And when you look, and when you look at the report card, if you can stay away from the A through F's and actually look at some of the, some of the measures and the growth, I mean, that's accurate data that's helpful to us. It needs to be said that, you know, four years ago, we really didn't have a curriculum that aligned to state standards. And that's a huge issue that our community needs to understand. You know, the work of your team and Dr. Dixon before that to, you know, push this through is, is a big difference on the district. I mean, this, this was an accurate assessment. I mean, we can't fight this. Our curriculum didn't align to the standards. We had great teachers, teaching great things, and bits and pieces were aligned to a standard, but nothing that we could really measure against. And you could argue if we need to stay at the standard or just let the teacher do what they wanna do, which is okay too, to a certain extent. But, you know, I'm proud of the work that this team has done to, you know, at least get us on the right train. But I'm anxious to know about the measurements of where this is gonna go. I was really hoping the answer to your question was gonna be, yeah, they're gonna be doing this in 2020. So, we'd be able...
Because then we would get the second set of data points, right?
Yeah, but knowing the state, they're gonna change all the benchmarks by then. And they're gonna compare this against an old benchmark. And it's apples to oranges. And it's like, you know, this is where we need to have our own measurements. And I'm not gonna ride this horse much longer. You've heard me say this a hundred times. But, yeah, I mean, this is where we need to have a better measurement of, I mean, is our curriculum measuring against standards? And we can measure that. I mean, there's some concern about some of the curriculums that we've chosen. You know, teachers talk to us, parents talk to us, you know, we hear lots of internal chatter. But, you know, certain things that we've bought, are they really effective? Are they not effective? You know, I come from a business world where it's two steps forward, one step back. I mean, sometimes when you invest something and you realize it's not working, the quicker you can throw that out and get something that's gonna be effective, the better. Don't stick with something that isn't what you really believed it to be. I'd love to know when we go through our curriculum analysis again. Is it really working? I know some of these things are 10-year deals. Is it really? Is it 10?
No.
I thought some of them was longer.
No, I thought four or five.
We started adopting in 2015.
Well, no, I mean, but, but you typically hold on to a curriculum for...
We, we adopted for a seven-year cycle. Like that's, so really, when you think about consumables and license and things like that, it's typically a seven-year. Some of those can be extended out. And I, and I think that, you know, from the curriculum, and I, I appreciate thinking about, like, this is a point in time. And a lot of our work has been to address some of these same issues that the state has brought up to us. Whether it's the perfect curriculum or whether we really need to look at it, is this an instruction issue? That's why I think they all do go together, that yes, if we're out there looking for that perfect curriculum, sometimes the perfect curriculum is what we've already heavily invested in, which is our teacher. Like, the implementation of standards-based instruction is really what we have invested in. So, what does that look like in C H U H? Because, you know, we'll chase our, I mean, I think you said it perfectly from O S B A. Like, there's a vendor who will sell you everything. Just ask, right? But it's like, when do we say, like, we had a good start? This got us, the, the point to come around the table and talk? And then, what we want from there is our teachers to take it the next, the next step.
Well, the other thing that this doesn't show us is how we compare to anybody else. I mean, did 99% of the school districts in Ohio have this same kind of a score or not? I mean, we're seeing one little snapshot. I mean, there's comparing, comparing yourself, comparing yourself against others, comparing yourself against yourself over time. I mean, we can't really do that with just one set of data.
We had the two measures because I actually, actually, I had just started in the district like a year later. And I did find one from 2012. So, we were able to compare those two together to really help us focus on how we needed to step out the work for the next couple of years.
When it comes to professional development, I think we've changed our approach radically. And how do you know when that's had the right effect?
Well, we do an evaluation after each professional development day. And we're also going back to look at the work that we have in the curriculum pieces to see if then it transfers over into the classroom and then transfers onto some of the assessments that we have. We're definitely needing to do a curriculum analysis. Yeah, so, we, we know we need to do that. But we feel that we are very close to the curriculum. And so, some outside eyes would probably be better to do a curriculum analysis for us.
I'm sorry, so when were you thinking about doing that? Bring, bring someone in to do that?
We've been talking about that for 2020. That's been, that's been our conversation since we've begun this year.
Okay, any more questions for our data team, our Ed Services team? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very comprehensive presentation. I appreciated it. Love the videos. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the glossary.
Yeah, and the glossary. Really love the glossary. Thank you. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Kirby to talk about the middle school preliminary equity analysis.
This is mine. I can just move mine on? You have your folders on the right side in the back, copies of the slides. And then, for the audience, we have copies.
And it is on Board Docs, right? That's where I just got it. Yeah, it's on Board Docs now. If you're signed, it's, I'm signed in.
All right, are you all ready?
Yes.
So, we wanted to use this work session also to address some concerns that were raised at the last board meeting about equity concerns of the two middle schools. So, the team and I did an initial assessment, looking at some basic areas in both schools just to see, are we seeing some inequities in terms of resources? And also, opportunities for students as well. So, today, we're gonna look at key areas for Monticello Middle School and Roxborough Middle School to look at the resources and opportunities for the students. And then, towards the end, we'll talk about next steps and get your feedback on those. So, today, we're gonna look at the two, the two classes, actually, which were the first areas that were raised, the geometry classes and the music classes. We'll look at gifted staffing, athletics, extracurricular activities, budget, external partners, and central office support. So, these are all different areas. These were not all raised, but we thought this would be a good opportunity to, to see what this looks like at both schools. So, I start just giving a general overview of the two buildings. Monticello's, first quarter enrollment, 576 students. Roxborough, Roxborough's, 600. Please keep in mind that these numbers do tend to fluctuate as students transfer in and out. But this just gives you a sense. You see the grade level distribution. You see the gender distribution on this slide. And you also see the minority enrollment as well for the two schools.
Why do we have more boys than girls at the middle school? I mean, that's odd.
Oh, I'm not surprised by that at all.
Where do the girls go for three years?
Private school.
These things tend to go in cycles. I've seen that too.
Interesting.
I definitely see a lot of boys whenever they visit the middle school, so... And then, these, these next couple of slides just give us the context of academic performance of the schools. I share this, this key just so you can see how the letter grades are assigned. And then, at the bottom, towards the bottom of this next slide, you see the two schools, a comparison for Monticello and Roxborough of their school year 18 and school year 19 report card, report card designations. In both instances, schools moved their overall grades. Roxborough went from an F in S Y 18 to a D in S Y 19. Rock, uh, Monticello, I'm sorry. And Roxborough went from a D in S Y 18 to a C in S Y 19. So, again, and then you see those, those cutoff points there. So, the first thing I wanna talk about is the geometry class. Geometry is an advanced math that's taught in the middle schools. And the students in those classes typically, well, they do feed from the algebra classes as well. Monticello currently has 29 students enrolled in one class. The teacher who teaches the Monticello geometry class also teaches at Cleveland Heights High School. And Roxborough, they have 35 students enrolled, 35 students enrolled across two classes. And that teacher is staffed at Roxborough all day. So, how did this happen? The class size at Monticello, though large, is not as large as the Roxborough geometry class. So, 29 students in a, in a class is a lot of students. That teacher also was needed to pick up classes at the high school. And the schedule that the teacher was teaching at the high school and the way that it aligned with the Monticello schedule necessitated that teacher to only be able to teach the one class. So, it's a resource issue, but it's also a timing issue. At Roxborough, teachers, teacher, again, is there all day. They can stay all day and they are available also for the intervention periods and supports for the students. So, this is one of those really challenging situations where you try to decide, so, are we gonna have a class size limit in the district? Are we gonna make a choice and say, once a class hits this particular size, we automatically go into two classes?
Can I at least comment on that? I mean, let's think about the fact that these are students who are being pushed. And this is going on their high school's transcript and they're middle school kids. and their middle school kids. So when I see twenty-nine kids in a math, you know, a class, and you're putting kids in that situation, that does concern me. Frankly, it does.
I, I agree with the concern, but we do have to make choices in our district. Because if we look at math instruction all across the district and the class size numbers, which is something that we can do, there are some, some decisions that are being made in terms of class size that could raise a concern. You could argue the other side. You could argue that if you are in a, a student who is in a regular level class where students are really struggling, should you have a class size of twenty-nine? Right?
Right.
And so, this actually speaks to a larger question that we're not going to explore deeply today, but I do think we should come back to this issue of class size and resource allocation. We are a district that offers excellent, wonderful opportunities for students. There are some teachers that don't carry as many students as other teachers, and so you do have an unattended consequence of sometimes some teachers carrying larger loads. So it's a, it's a challenge of offering a lot, and it's something that we have to... To me, what this really shows is that we have to really work on a couple of things. One, what is the, are, what are, how are we preparing more students to take advanced classes, such that at Monticello, we can have more students in the geometry classes, and also more students even in the algebra classes? Because if you look at the algebra class size, we're going to have the same issue next year at Monticello.
Yep.
So that's one.
Which we also had the year before.
So, yes, so that's, so that's one thing. So how, overall, and that pipeline starts, we know, not just in the middle schools, that, that track for students starts in the elementary schools as well. So it kind of connects to the gifted issue, which we're going to talk about momentarily. The other thing is really working with the high school around the scheduling piece. So the high school and the middle school, if they do share, and there are other, other examples where staff are shared between buildings, but we want to make sure that we have coordination around that. We saw this issue in the fall when it was raised. We looked to see, well, maybe we can move kids around, maybe we can, we can create two classes, but it would have created even more disruption for a larger subset of students, both at the middle school with some of their schedules changing, but also for the high school, too, as well. So this is something that we have to know, we now know we have to anticipate and plan for as we build those schedules out. I will say that the remedy, short-term remedy for this year, we have had tutors starting, actually, across classes, and specifically in this geometry class, to help provide some small group instruction support for the teacher as he's working with the students as well. The teacher also has received additional professional, you know, learning support in his role as a, as a teacher in the building. And we also even moved the class size, I mean, the, the classroom where it was in, because initially, the room that the teacher was in was too cramped. So he's now in a room that's bigger, and that should help with the, with the grouping as well. And then, long-term, as we were just talking, looking at the number of students taking advanced math classes. I mean, you could also really argue, though, that we want to increase that number in Roxborough. We want, we want to have as many students as possible
Everywhere.
taking the advanced math classes.
Problem's not the number of kids in advanced math. The problem is not enough teachers teaching advanced math.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, always, more, more, more.
Yeah. So, so that's the geometry. We have a short-term remedy with the teachers. Long-term, we're looking at the programming, working in partnership, and increasing the numbers of, increasing the numbers of students. The second piece is the music classes. So the concern around music, and first, I'll just go through the context of the school. So currently, Monticello has one full-time band teacher and two part-time high school musical directors. So that equals two full-time teachers, but it's actually three, three people who are teaching at Monticello. Roxborough has two full-time teachers that are at the school site all day, and as a result, they're able to offer the jazz ensemble and the Strolling Strings program. That is not an option at this point that is available for Monticello, just because the teacher is, you know, the director at the high school and goes back to the high school as well. Now, you can look at it a couple of ways. Some, some folks may say, well, actually, Monticello's getting, you know, the seasoned director of the program who's, you know, coming to, to teach the, to teach the students, and so that may help them as they matriculate up into the high school. But on the other side, if the students aren't able, you know, right after school, to kind of have that extra opportunity, then they miss out on that as well. So our remedies, this is an area where we don't have an immediate remedy for providing the jazz ensemble and the Strolling Strings program. At this point, I think it's, those programs are kind of taught as a, in a volunteer fashion. The teacher's kind of after-school, working with the students. So we don't have them as a specific supplemental right now. What we can do is to look to see if there, if there are ways that we can transport students who may want to do the program at, at Roxborough. But, you know, I haven't been able to assess, assess if there are a lot of students who really want to do that, or if it's one or two. I will be doing follow-up with parents and students at Monticello to get that information. I was in the, today, just happened to be in the Monticello orchestra class today as well. So I was able to see, you know, see the students there, getting instruction. Now, the nice thing was, it was a, a small group, you know, maybe about twenty students and two instructors, and they're working individually with students as they are preparing for, preparing for a performance. So that's going to, that will require additional follow-up on that opportunity. But that is what our current situation is with music. So I also wanted to take a look at the gifted program as well. At Monticello, we have forty-eight students who are in grades six and seven that are in the gifted program. Roxborough has ninety-six students in grades six and seven. Then there are eighth, eleven eighth-grade students in the Science Olympiad and Model UN, Model UN program. There are twenty-one of those students at Roxborough. Monticello has two gifted teachers. Roxborough has two gifted teachers. The Monticello teacher does teach one day at the high school. And actually, with the reintroduction of the middle school scholar program, the reason that we do have two gifted teachers at Monticello was to, was to support that. Because if you just look at it at a caseload, on a caseload basis, Monticello could, could arguably just have the one gifted teacher. So that extra support was added, but that, one of those teachers does take a day at the high school to support the gifted program there. I do want to just take a moment to look at the racial breakdown, because I think this is an important, important thing to know as we look at strategic planning moving forward. And so you'll see here, in blue, you have Roxborough, and the highlighted yellow, you have Monticello. And then, if we look at the students by race and who's designated in the gifted program, four Asian in Monticello, one in Roxborough, fifty-three black students in Monticello are designated gifted, twenty-four at Roxborough. And then you see the four multi-ethnic, ten at Roxborough, twenty white students at Monticello, a hundred fourteen at Roxborough, one Hispanic at Monticello, six at Roxborough. And so you see, overall, the total numbers of students that are designated as well. So again, this is something, this is a number that has been increasing and that we want to continue to increase. You know, the gifted task force was engaged in this work. I'm now looking, looking at other ways to, to identify more students that are gifted and to make sure that we're really pushing students and providing those services. But again, when you look at the, some of the decisions that are making in terms of resource allocation, you have these numbers that kind of show you the overall programs as well. Okay, I think I surely made a mistake here. Let me open this back up, sorry. Okay. So the next area...
Yeah, I always...
Is our athletic facilities. And, you know, we've had great work that have been done on both of our middle schools with the reopening of those this year. But when we look at some of the athletic challenges, they were not all, we didn't, they were not all able to be solved with the renovation. So, Monticello, and it's really kind of blended. So Monticello, for example, has a better gym than Roxborough. You know, they have bleacher seating, they did work in that gym. Roxborough has a gym behind the stage with limited visibility. When you look at the football and baseball field at Monticello, it is not in the same condition as the football and baseball field in Roxborough, and in fact, needs quite a bit of work to come up to standard. And so this, I won't go through these links, but you just kind of have those pictures, George provided these for us, so we can see what those sites look like. So we have situations where it's not optimal, where it's not optimal. The solution that we have come up with for the Roxborough gym is that the students, both the girls and the boys teams, will be using the auxiliary, one of the auxiliary gyms at the high school for, for their competitions. And in terms of the athletic fields, our recommendation is to start the work first at the Roxborough football, football and baseball field, in terms of getting those sites really up to code as well. We, long-term, have to also make decisions on what kind of renovations we want to make for Monticello in terms of their football and baseball fields. Some of that is going to be based upon student interest in the sports. Some of that is going to be based upon what we think is the best decision, the best facilities decision for those. But both of those sites do, do need work. So for Roxborough, we have, we are addressing the, the basketball issue that they've had right now, but we have to do some long-term planning for the football and baseball issue for Monticello. So we also wanted to show athletic offerings, just so you got a sense of what kind of opportunities students have. And so here, you see that the schools have the same programs, co-ed soccer, girls tennis, boys tennis, girls volleyball, cross-country, boys and girls basketball, track for both genders, and also softball and baseball. Sometimes, if there's low enrollment, these do, the teams do combine, but the students are able to participate, you know, with another school if they don't have enough students to, to form a team as well. So for, you'll see that here with bowling, golf, football, wrestling, girls lacrosse, and boys lacrosse at the middle school. So we then wanted to take a look at the extracurricular activities outside of athletics that the students are able to participate in. So on these links, you'll see the clubs for Monticello. And these are just, I won't go through all of these. They have a lot of the same clubs, you'll, you'll note. And also, the clubs for, let's keep switching, I'm sorry about that. All right, hold on one second. Well, we can actually go off the paper copies until this kind of starts talking to each other. It doesn't help that I have twenty slides open on my computer, I'm sure. Okay, so, and then on the other, that other piece, you'll see the same, the clubs for Roxborough. So, you know, this is interesting. The schools don't always offer the same clubs, and some of that is just based on student interest, too, as well. You know, I was having a conversation with one of the principals, and I think, you know, they were asking, well, if we want to do this coding club, but do we, can we do it if, if Roxborough doesn't do it? And I don't think that I would want to limit a school who wants, if there are students who are interested at one middle school in something, that, that's something I think that they should be allowed to explore. And if we find that another middle school, the other middle school is interested, we can support them in bringing that up as well. So the only, the only extracurricular activities that were limited this year were the Strolling Strings and the Jazz Ensemble, just because of the availability of the teachers. But outside of that, you know, we remain committed to providing students with as many opportunities to explore their interests in, in, you know, themselves as well with, with those activities.
I have a chicken and egg question.
Hmm?
You know, we have certain teachers who have historically run specific clubs that, you know, they're interested in, they're good at, they have whatever engagement with. If, say, five students get together and want to start a new club, they need to find a teacher to be their
Advisor.
sponsor, their advisor, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, it, it's sort of, how, how does that happen?
Well, we, we will eventually, if it becomes a bona fide club, have to add it as a supplemental. And, you know, that, that can be a negotiation with our union leadership as well. So that's a step that we just have to make sure that we have to take. We just recently made official the middle school LGBTQ clubs at both of the sites. So those are official with, you know, with supplementals and the, the sponsors, you know, being compensated for that. So that is a process that we would have to take to make those bona fide.
Right. So, on the one hand, you have teachers who have to recruit students to keep their clubs going, say, from year to year, if everybody goes off to high school and nobody is interested in whatever.
Right.
And on the other hand, you have teachers, you have students who might want to do something different and have to go recruit a teacher. So, sort of, interesting relationship there.
It looks like I'm back in business, but I'm going to go scroll slowly. I think the next is budget. Yeah. So I also wanted to get, you know, a lot of times, if you, when, when, when an issue is raised around equity, we go to the resources, because, you know, I truly believe that your equity philosophy is reflected in your budget. And so we looked at the title budget for the schools and also the general funds budget. You'll see that Monticello receives for this, this year, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is for approximately. For title funds, a hundred and seventy thousand. For general funds, Roxborough receives two hundred and forty-eight thousand in title, a hundred and seventy-four in general funds. Monticello receives a little bit more, because they are a focused school, so that's in terms of the title funds as well. But when you look at just how we have dispersed the money to the schools, we don't see, you know, really, really big differences. And the general funds budget is based on enrollment for students as well. So then, we wanted to take a look at the, both the internal support of the central office team and also the external support as well. So if, if you look at, we'll start with the external partners. Both of the schools here have, have at least twenty-two external partners. Monticello has two additional partners that are working in their schools. And so you see, those partners range from, you want to go to the Yes Columns, the libraries, PTA Council, the International Film Festival, just kind of a whole host of different partners that are supporting the schools. And one thing that I noted in the BLT walk at Monticello today is that the principals' team are really focused on increasing, they have, for their PTA, they have a goal to have a hundred members of the PTA. I think it's by January, they're at sixty now, which is really fabulous and fantastic. They have a listening session coming up at their school, where they're going to be listening from the community about what they want at the schools, they get community input, that's coming up. They also recently launched a, a Monticello podcast. So they're doing a lot to really do outreach to the community, provide opportunities for students, and really, you know, make sure that we continue to have great partners and opportunities for the schools as well. So those are the external partners. The internal partners show the work that the Ed Services team has been doing and how it's been allocated, and I thought it was good for us to also show that, just so you can see who we have assigned to the schools, who are going out and providing support. So as I go to this later slide, I'll open that up as well. I think when I open it up, it bounces me out, but that's okay.
Same thing happens to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, always bounces me back to the first slide.
Oops, extracurriculars, we did budget. The last one, the next step, so I can, I don't need the notes for that. So, all right, so for central office support here, you'll see the schools, the principal, the team members that are supporting those schools, you'll see the coaches in the district support, the title leads, gifted, EL. And really, you don't see big differences in supports for the schools. So it's not like we are providing more support for Rocks versus Monte or the other way around. So, for example, both principals are engaged with coaching, principal instructional coaching with creative, creative solutions. They have different coaches that are working with them on their practice. You'll see the Avid program is active and alive at all of the schools, at both of those schools. And you can look at this on your own as well. When we look at the number of, we do have the two dean positions that we anticipate will be starting in January at both of those schools as well to assist those will be starting in January at both of those schools as well, um, to assist those schools in meeting their academic goals by working, continuing to work on the climate. You see the social worker allocations, um, at those schools as well. So for example, uh, Monticello has, um, one full-time social worker, and when you look at Rocks Middle, they have, um, a social worker that is split, um, as well. So you do, you see some differences, some differences in the schools, um, but again, um, that's based on, based on need. So, our next steps. This analysis is just the beginning, we just wanted to get overall, are we seeing anything that's really glaring just in our available data on the schools? Our next steps will be meeting with parent groups at bo- at both schools, I want to share this analysis with them so that they're aware of this. Um, and also to get their other feedback and insight, because some of the, the concerns around equity, some of the reasons why I looked at these things were based on conversations from parents, they kind of helped me to know what we should be, uh, making sure we pay attention to. This year, we're focused on an equity analysis tool to build that to align with the board, to the Board of Ed, and it can be something as simple as, these are the series of questions that we ask ourselves before we make a major decision at our schools, to make sure that our decision-making is in alignment, um, with our board policy. As we're preparing for the launch of the 2025 strategic plan, this, we also anticipate that this work will be a part of that practice as well. So being more explicit, so we have the equity policy, and we have the equity working goal too, being more specific around what our district actions are to make, to, to deepen the, deepen the equity work. The third thing is, uh, we want to meet with students to understand their experiences. Today I was able to talk with a group of Monticello students in their Spanish class, and we talked about, they had a sub, but I think I was a, I was, this was a class where we tried to make it.
But were you speaking in Spanish?
I was definitely not speaking in Spanish. Um, but I, but we had an opportunity to talk about, um, I wanted to hear about what their experiences were going from, you know, one middle school together to, you know, back to a separate campus. And it was interesting, and the students talked a lot about, you know, it was really a lot of fun being together, they saw their, you know, friends that they have from, from, um, elementary school, you know, they were, they, they said a lot about fun, right? And they said, "It didn't feel crowded to us." I said, "It didn't feel crowded?" "No, it was fun, you know, the hallways weren't crowded at all." And I was like, hmm, how do we remember seeing that when I visited?
You wouldn't have said that the first time.
Right. Um, so, you know, but, so it was interesting kind of hearing from them around, you know, so they didn't talk specifically about, you know, music or, you know, the geometry class, because I don't want to get that specific, but they do feel a sense of it's different. Um, and that didn't surprise me, you know, it does feel different. Now, the sixth graders have no clue, you know, this is what it's supposed to be.
The other group that would have insight too are the ninth graders.
Right.
Because they were in their separate schools, then they were together for seventh and eighth, and, you know, then they went off to high school.
And what's interesting about that observation is, you know, we're always trying to do root cause analysis, when we look at the ninth graders, because, you know, we're looking at their attendance and all that every week, um, they are making better progress than previous ninth grades. And so one theory is, not only are we being more intentional, but they got to know each other in middle school altogether, so they may have skipped some of that, who are you?
An easier transition.
Let's transition into ninth grade, yeah.
It was an easier transition.
And then the final step is, we have to follow up on the short-term and long-term remedies, especially around, uh, the music class in particular. That was the one that we just couldn't solve right away, um, and so we have to really see what the, what the ask is, and how we can make that happen for, if we can make that happening for students, hopefully we can this year.
My, my, my question, um, my question is, how is the, uh, geometry, uh, instructor, how is he handling, how is he doing, doing both schools? Is he able to manage that?
Yeah, he's, the way that his schedule, he has travel time, um, in between, so that allows him to, you know, he still has to, you know, go right away to the high school. But that was built in so that, to help with that transition. He's not the only teacher that's split between schools, we have other schools as well, where we do have teachers that are teaching at different sites. Um, he also has, uh, support, um, you know, from other district personnel, you know, um, you know, for him, just to, whatever can happen to help him, you know, better facilitate the class. Uh, the tutor started, I think, about a week, week or two ago. Um, and so, we'll check back to see, I mean, the school also is supporting, I mean, clearly the principal and the, and the coach is there, but also check back to see the impact of those, impact of those tutors.
So I'm a little, um, I mean, this whole geometry class was really the first indicator that we heard as board members that there was an issue, um, perception or reality. And, you know, it would have been nice if that situation wouldn't have been able to fix quicker. I mean, these kids, um, you know, lost time, and there was concern, you know, I don't know how long, I mean, s- some of them are sitting in radiators, it just seemed, I mean, for, for the, I don't know for how long. I mean, it's good to hear that they're in a different classroom. I mean, first of all, I mean, before I start dumping on that, I mean, the work to create this is really helpful. I mean, there, before we as a community across both buildings could have an honest conversation, is you need to have some kind of baseline.
Yeah.
And this baseline, I think, is something to work from. I'm a little concerned that, you know, many are looking at this as an equity issue when it's more of an equality issue. And we know as board members, that's really two different topics. They're both important. But sometimes you need to have more equality to get some equity. And that's something we, which we've also learned. We also know that these two buildings aren't equal. I mean, they're serving different groups of kids, they're going to have different needs, so, um, it should be okay. Okay, well, I'd like to get to a place where people understand, if there's more needed, let's say, the Monticello building, we need to put more resources into that building. And it's okay to put less resources in one, so maybe this is where you don't get the equality, but you get, you get the equity. So I think this is a great way to enter into that conversation. And it's at a great time for these parents that are in our middle schools. I mean, it's going to take us some time to figure this out, and having these parents and the community members at the middle school level move on to the high school level, because this could, I mean, this is a multi-year process. They will help, you know, help us, you know, by the time their kids graduate, hopefully we'll be at a point where we'll have solved some of this mess.
Yeah.
I mean, this has always seemed like a perception issue, um, between equality, but there's, you know, perception versus reality, there's not much difference. I mean, you still hear stories about a ski club where, you know, you know, there's one ski club, but if you want to get there, you got to get in your car to get there. And this is not about, I mean, you know, you know, that's one tiny element that gets talked a lot about. Uh, you also hear about the music school, the music program, where the, um, uh, the Rocks Arts Endowment, you know, now the Tiger Nation Fund, um, you know, intentionally bought a lot of musi- a lot of musical instruments, and they happen to be housed at Rocks.
Right.
So, you know, how can we release some of those musical instruments to get that equality that we need to have?
Right.
So, I mean, this is a great place to jump in. You, you know, the only thing that I'm really, you know, concerned about is the amount of time it's taken us to, um, put some remedies, I mean, to, you know, to have some of these remedies. I mean, I would think with the additional tutors at Monticello, you know, you know, maybe it's giving those kids some, you know, extra support, um, probably more support than maybe their Roxborough counterparts.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I can't, you know, I, I don't even know if that's a true statement or not, I mean, I think the parents and the kids.
Will help to fill gaps.
Yeah, so.
And one thing, I, I forgot to mention, one of the teachers at Monticello also, um, provides after-school, you know, as a, as a geometry teacher would, if he could be their after-school support for students too as well. So we have that set up, um, for the teacher to, to assist students. I think we want to take a look at the, the, to your earlier point, the assessment performance mid-year in geometry, we'll have a good sense of how the students are performing on, um, on the geometry assessment. When, I can't remember, I did look at the numbers, um, for the first unit, um, and there was about a 20% point gap, which can be for, for kids, something like that, between the two schools. So we now want to look to see, um, what we're seeing there and make sure that we have targeted support for that, because we want all the students to be successful in geometry at both schools.
In terms of performance, I, I, you know, I, the overall, you know, and we have to be careful to put a whole lot of weight into anything that has the state of Ohio test score. But, uh, you know, Monticello actually had a, a larger improvement, if you look at the numeric interpretation of it. Um, Monticello did, you know, uh, had a larger growth between those two years. A couple of things just sort of came to my mind in, in no particular order. But as we were, um, as we're looking at how to, um, address the problem of scheduling a teacher, uh, who, who's at more than one building, did we consider, uh, something like a zero period, which is something that we've done in, in, uh, where I teach in Sharton, um, where, you know, y- you offer, uh, the course, um, the geometry course, zero period, if the kids can get to school. A period earlier.
Yeah.
Or extending the day in the afternoon. I, I don't know, I'm just putting it out there.
Zero, zero period at the actual middle school sites.
Or at the high school.
Or at the high school, yeah.
To free up a period at the middle school sites. Now, very few kids at the high school take the bus, which might help, more kids at middle school do. Just something to consider.
Yeah, that's actually, we have been talking just a bit about that, you know, we could, we have a whole high school, we could offer to the middle schools actually, you know what I mean? So, would, could there be some opportunities for them to take classes at site?
Right.
You just have to look at the transportation cost and like the, the movement and all of that, then they could all be together again.
So, I hadn't even thought of that, you could have zero period at the high school. I was thinking zero, zero period at the middle school. Where the teacher moves, the kids come to school earlier. So, um, just ideas. I've seen the middle school scholars program discussed, and I think that that is the, uh, advanced social studies and science work, is that, am I?
No, that's the gifted. Middle school scholars program is the gifted program, it's not the honors social studies and science.
I'm so glad for that clarification, because I saw it, I saw the middle school honors social studies, science, and I just wasn't sure what that.
I'm correct in that, right? I'm just, I'm just checking with the experts.
MSSP is the pullout, is the gifted, we're supposed to be supporting.
Got it. Good. And then, um, for a, a, a while, there have been questions about, um, how students are identified as gifted. And are those, uh, identifying standards uniform? And I was, that, there, there was one rather historic case in the district. But I'm one, I, I'm just wondering, are, um, the methods to identify students identical at the middle school, at the two middle schools?
Yes, yes, I'm on that task force, and Troy is here, but yes.
Great.
They are, and, um, the state has given very strict guidelines that we adhere to.
Cool, that's, that, I'm very glad to hear that. And then George hasn't been called on today, so, I see him in the back pretending not to be there. As I was looking at the, um, the pictures of the Monticello site, George, have you put any thought into, is there any, is there any available land? If you, if you bring it up.
Yeah, I'll bring it up.
Yeah, I'm sure you probably know exactly the piece of land I'm going to ask you about, George. On the far side of the track and football, yeah, track and football field, well, no, it's the track, really, there's a large gray area there behind a couple houses. I'm just wondering if we've ever inquired as to the ownership of that, and might we be able to increase our footprint?
I'm sure it's something we could look into, I've been trying to get rid of property, not acquiring.
Good answer.
But it's, I mean, if that's something that you want to pursue, to pursue.
I'm just wondering, because it, it is a, it is a, you know, they're not making any more land, you know, and the reason that, that we have a separate baseball field and track, football field at Rocks is just because we have a larger footprint of land.
Which we don't have.
But we only have one football team, so they don't need two football fields, in that sense.
There wasn't enough participation for football, so we, we actually transport some students from Monticello that want to participate.
That's interesting, I wonder if that's going to be.
Whereas we have two baseball teams and two softball teams.
Concussion and that sort of thing, I wonder if the sport is being affected.
They had, they, they had more teams, more participants in football this year, um, if you look at the whole program, so they, they really have been growing that program.
Yeah.
But I can, I can investigate, I currently have, uh, a real estate agent helping us with investigate potential places for our buses, I can ask him to take a look at that.
It's worth, worth a toss. And, um, thank you, George. I'm so interested in the Monticello podcasts, and I was wondering if, um, Kathan could make those available on the new app, I'm plugging the app, Kathan, it's pretty cool. That'd be, that'd be neat. And then.
And it's also available if you follow me on Twitter, C-H-U-H-S-U-P-T.
Oh, right, I like that.
You're going to make me a Twitter account?
And the, um, the discussion of the, really impressive size of the Monty, um, PTA reminded me that there is a middle school night out at Night Town on the 16th from 5:00 to 7:00, and that's a total of both middle schools. So, I know that, just thought I'd give that a little plug as well.
It's the first I've heard of it. Thank you.
You know, I'm very tuned in to the Night Town scene.
Thank you for putting this together, I know there was a lot of work, I appreciate it.
And I thank the team, because all these different departments took the leadership and their teams to, to suss this out, so I appreciate their work on this.
And I think it's really important, we look at this, um, it's something I know I've personally been concerned about for quite a while. Um, I think I raised the first issue about the math class two years ago, when the algebra class had 30 kids. The first high school level class the seventh graders take. So, thank you, and thank you for taking a very deep look at it. One thing that's not on here that I would like to see or maybe get an update at the next meeting is, um, we did open two new middle schools, they're beautiful, how are we going about, um, closing out, making sure all the work orders are finished, all the, punch ticket things, I know when they walk through, um, I think we'll probably have to get an update on that, just because I know that the clock runs on, you know, was it one year or something, you have to have certain things closed out, so we should probably get an update.
Okay.
On how we're doing on that.
So I'm, I can't help but notice that we've got a pretty consistent two-to-one ratio between Rocks and Monty on everything involving gifted. And that's significant. And I have no idea what is under that, but that's something that I would like to look at. You know, just as we want to increase the number of students who are taking algebra and geometry at the middle school level, I want to see why, or how, or whether, um, there are more children who can be identified as gifted in Monty. Because that's, I mean, that's pretty startling.
And part of it is, if you look at that chart, go look at who's feeding, you know, which schools are feeding where and where the gifted is, I mean, because it all feeds up.
You have to work it down.
You have to work it down.
Absolutely.
To take a look at it.
Because that, that's stark, I mean, you know, a 20% difference here or there, I wouldn't care about, but this is big.
All right, any other questions for Superintendent Kirby? Then we are at the end of our agenda, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely, I motion we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.